Going to start with a little sound check. Make sure that everybody can hear me. Needs to be louder, louder. How about now? Back in the corners, how's that? Okay.
A little better.
A little better. A lot better, Ken? Two better? Okay. Well, before calling to order, have a couple of things planned for this evening, including try to do a little invocation each year. This year I've drafted my own. It's my effort at setting a tone for civility before we all come together to do our civic duty. So, we gather again in unity even if we are not united in opinion. We set aside our differences but hold tight to our convictions. We speak with courage and listen with respect. Let us congregate with the common purpose of local governance and let us each have the will to participate. So as you all will recall who have come to town meetings past, we're governed by state law and by Robert's rule of order. And if you look at page five in your annual report, you will find some of the more common procedures. We can't change state law, but you can certainly suspend Robert's rules with a two-thirds majority vote or by what we call unanimous consent. There are a couple of microphones here, stationary. Are there any portable microphones tonight? They are portable, great. So it's important that everybody that wishes to speak make use of the microphone, announce your name for our secretary taking notes. And again, the microphone is handy for people watching at home. The procedure for tonight is going to be pretty straightforward. I will read the article as it's written in the warning. I'll ask for a motion from the floor to bring an article to you. Once it's seconded, then we can begin discussion. An article can be amended more than once, but there can only be one amended article on the floor at a time. Debate can be cut off with a motion to call the question, but be reminded that you can't just yell out "call the question." It is a motion, so you make the motion to call the question. It needs to be seconded and then a two-thirds vote. That will end debate if it's in the affirmative. We'll follow with a voice vote. If I can't decipher from up here, we will either divide the House or if seven of you wish to have a paper ballot, we can do that as well. If there's any questions along the way or you disagree with the way things are going or way that I've moved things along, please speak up. Only voters of the town may vote. We have in the past amended Robert's rules to allow non-town voters to answer questions. I'm not sure that that will be an issue this year, but just in an abundance of caution, I'll say if there's no objection, I'll amend the rule to allow non-registered voters to answer any questions people may have. And not seeing or hearing any objection, we'll adopt that. Some quick introductions. Our select board, we have our chair, Phil Pouch, who will be giving a presentation early on this evening. Members Aaron Kimball, Andrea Morganti, Tom Eyre, and Merrily Lovell. Our town clerk is Missy Ross and our assistant town clerk is Cheryl Hubbard and our town administrator Renee Marshall. Before we get going with the evening formally, Bill Leappert, our state representative, is here and would like to have a couple of words to tell you about what's going on in Montpelier.
Made it through there. Well, good evening. I appreciated Frank's invitation to say a few words and knowing that we're here primarily to deal with town business, I'll be brief. I did put together a printed, brief summary of some items that we're taking up in Montpelier. If you didn't get one, there are more laying on the table and there hopefully be some at the polls tomorrow. We also have Bill Doyle's annual poll. Even though Bill is no longer a senator, the Doyle poll continues and he's an institution. So let me just say that we are midway through our legislative session. The town meeting day, what has become a town meeting day break, marks the point where the House must get its bills to the Senate and the Senate must get its bills to the House in order for us to consider the work of the other body. The number one issue annually is the budget and this year it's no different. The budget must start in the House under the Vermont Constitution. So the House reviews the governor's budget, reviews the recommendations of policy committees. And I'm going to tell you, this year we are faced with some, once again, some very difficult choices in the state budget. The governor has put together a series of initiatives and has asked that the budget not increase any more than 3%. And yet, when you add the initiatives, you have to look at what the cuts were proposed. The cuts were not widely advertised, the initiatives have been. In fairness, the House Appropriations Committee is looking very carefully at the list of proposed reductions in state programs as well as the proposed increases in initiatives. Our regular expenses, as with the town of Heinsburg, it's not too different, averages about 2.3% just to cover the ongoing expenses, payroll, maintenance, et cetera. So to create initiatives, one does need to create reductions and that is the tension that is there. So I encourage you to look carefully at the media to follow what's going on, but some of these reductions, I chair the healthcare committee and I have some grave concern about some of the reductions in terms of particularly in areas of healthcare where we're trying to maintain a stable Vermont health insurance market to try to make healthcare affordable for most Vermonters, for all Vermonters, and to sustain what we have created here in Vermont. Sometimes in the midst of being in Vermont, we forget what it's like elsewhere and sometimes we take for granted what we have, even as challenging as it is. I also want to just let you know that we're spending a great deal of time, both in the healthcare committee as well as the appropriations committee as well as the Ways and Means Committee, in reacting and responding to actions from Washington DC. In the healthcare committee, we have spent a good part of the session simply protecting Vermont's insurance markets from actions which the administration has put in motion, which in the view, I'm sure you should know, in a bipartisan view would destabilize Vermont's health insurance market. So we have passed out unanimously out of our committee, a number of different initiatives to protect us from destabilizing actions that could come as a result of Washington. The tax bill in Washington DC, while widely advertised as giving tax cuts, actually results after careful analysis in $30 million in tax increases for Vermonters. So the Ways and Means Committee, along with the administration, has been looking carefully at how to protect Vermonters from the increase of $30 million in new taxes which would not come to the state but which go to the federal government. So again, I've outlined briefly here that there are initiatives from the Ways and Means Committee which is looking at reducing the tax rates on a number of different issues in Vermont so that we're not raising taxes based on a change in the federal tax law. The Ways and Means Committee is also looking at how to simplify and reduce the reliance on the property tax. Every one of us knows the pressures of the property tax for school education and they are putting forward a proposal which will be debated on the floor of the House to add an income tax surcharge in place of a portion of the property tax to reduce the reliance on the property tax. But I would be, it would not be fair to not name and talk about briefly at least, the political issue that has shaken Vermont in the last few weeks. And that is the issue of gun safety issues, school safety issues. When the massacre took place in a Florida school, people were shook. But when we realized that we had a near miss right here in Vermont, in Fairhaven, in the Fairhaven School, and here we are in the school as I thought about coming here tonight. The fact that we have children going to schools, having to learn how to protect themselves from shooters in schools, has, I think frankly, shocked most of Vermont. And the result is that both the House and the Senate and the governor's office are working carefully to try to find the right combination of legislative initiatives to protect our children in Vermont schools and to protect Vermonters. There's no question this is a controversial issue and how to protect the Second Amendment while protecting Vermonters and protecting children in schools is an important debate. And the debate has begun in the House and the Senate. And while the governor asked for a bill to be on his desk by town meeting, the House has acted, the Senate has acted, and we will resolve our differences, the details of which I won't go into here. But both the Senate and the House are working deliberatively and thoughtfully to try to think how best to protect our schoolchildren and how best to protect Vermonters around the issues that have frankly, suddenly, the earth has shifted politically in Vermont. So I think with that I'll stop and say that I welcome you to be in touch. I'm in Montpelier several nights a week at least, so I'm encouraging you to use my cellphone. I advertise it broadly. Give me a call, use my email. You may notice that I now have, I'm listing my legislative email because while I've usually advertised my GMAVT email, and you're welcome to still use it. When we have controversial issues, we have found that requests are made, legal requests to review all of our emails to see what we've said and sent to other people and what they've said and sent to us. And we have been advised by our legislative council to, if all possible, do most of our legislative business or all of our legislative business on our official emails. But either way, I want to hear from you. So please do be in touch and I look forward to talking with you this evening and tomorrow at the polls. Thank you.
Well, here's the formal part of opening town meeting by reading the warning. The legal voters of the town of Heinsburg, Vermont are hereby warned and notified to meet at the Champlain Valley Union High School Auditorium in said town of Heinsburg Monday, March 5, 2018 at 7:00 PM to transact business on all articles except Article 1, which will be voted upon by Australian ballot on Tuesday, March 6, 2018. Australian ballot voting will occur at the Town Hall at 10632 Vermont Route 116 in Heinsburg with the polls to open on March 6 at 7:00 AM and close at 7:00 PM. If necessary, the March 5 meeting may be adjourned to the Heinsburg Town Hall at 9:00 AM on March 6 to conduct any business left unfinished on March 5. Article 1 reads "To elect the necessary town and school district officers by Australian ballot Tuesday, March 6, 2018." Article 2, "To hear the reports of the officers of the town of Heinsburg and take action thereon." Is there a motion to bring Article 2 to the floor? Thank you. And a second, please?
A second.
Okay. We'll begin, I think, with Phil. Thank you.
Glad that worked. Welcome. Thank you all for coming. On behalf of the Select Board and our town administrator, we appreciate your input. So we did introduce the Select Board, we introduced our town administrator. I do want to introduce our new assistant town administrator, Troy Dubin-Grossman. Troy, can you just stand up? Would that be all right? Welcome. And we do have some department managers here. We have Chief Koss and Chief Barber. So I'm just going to do a brief report. We're going to go over some of the budget a little bit. I know that the detail will be as part of all the warned items, but if you saw the Burlington Free Press, it said the Heinsburg budget increasing by 12%. So how did we get there and where are we going from there? I want to honor some employees, the backbone of our town services, talk about some highlights from last year and some challenges. And I can say this year for the Select Board and our new town administrator, we've really been working hard to be open, improve the communication within the board, with the town, try to be as respectful as possible and improve transparency about what's happening in town. So hopefully we're getting there. So you might have seen this in the town report. This is a pie chart showing expenditures, the increase in expenditures for this fiscal year coming up, and that's 12% total of added expenditures. The biggest piece there, that big piece of the pie, is added debt. Those were bonded items, bonds that the town voted for primarily. It's the new highway garage project, about $200,000, and then the solar farm is just under $40,000. So that's the biggest piece there. The next biggest piece, you see vehicle and equipment. Those are some new police cars, a couple of police cars, new dump truck, new loader, pickup truck in the town for the town highway department. Again, those were all voted on last year in our budget, capital expenses. And then additional increases, I would say typical, our insurance went up, our workers' comp, and generally across the board for the town employees is a 3% salary increase. This sort of points out what the budget is that we're voting for, where it's going, and the percentages haven't changed really in years. So about a quarter or 25%, it goes to maintaining our highways. About 24% goes to general government. That is the Select Board, town administrator, town, the clerk, treasurer, planning and zoning, basically everything that happens in the Town Hall. Next piece, police, is 15% of the overall budget. Insurance, benefits, workers' comp, that's together between the two of those is about 12%. The fire department is 8% of the town budget. Our debt, those are the bonds, is about 8%. The library is about 6%. And then agency funding and intergovernmental activity, which primarily is Green Mountain Transit Bus Service. The agency funding is the social programs we fund, the nonprofits, those are each at 1%. So we're talking about the expenditures increasing, but our revenues increased too, so the tax budget's not going to go up 12%. So we did have some revenue increases. The grand list is about a half a percent is what we're estimating. It's not that big of a change. Vermont Gas is additional $100,000 in taxes for the new infrastructure for their pipeline. The solar farm generates income, so it actually generates maybe just a little bit more than it costs, so that gets added to our revenues. And this year, the Select Board, after the town audit and recommendation from Renee with discussions, we are going to apply $200,000 of a fund balance to offset tax increases. So we've done that in the past, but the last couple of years, we haven't done that because we, there's a percentage we want to make sure we have. We have more this year, so we feel and the auditors feel we're in good shape and we can apply that to the, it's the fund balance, we can apply that. So the bottom line, which is the most important piece, I think, is tax increase estimated at about 5%, 5.1%. And I say estimated because we don't set the tax rate until June, once all the final numbers come in, but they typically are pretty close, so that's where we are. I can say that we're very sensitive to the tax increase. It's one of, it's probably the biggest one we've had in years. Usually it's just a couple percent. And so I think the Select Board is sensitive, everybody is sensitive to it. And we know our school budget's going up this year too, could be 8% roughly as a tax in taxes. So we're sensitive to that. I'll say that the budget process was a collaborative process. We brought in department managers, we had some honest evaluation of where we are and primarily some of the things we've already voted for, some of these bonds and capital expenses are really the cause of this. But even still, we worked hard at this. It was difficult, but I will say the final budget was unanimously approved by the Select So talking about spending money, so here's the new town garage is under construction. It's expected to be completed by the summer and really it's long overdue. We have a lot of capital equipment by the highway department, you know, large dump trucks and all kinds of equipment. Now it can be properly stored and properly maintained and the working conditions are much more safer and more efficient. So we're looking forward to seeing that. So we have dump trucks and things like that, but really the bottom line for our town is our employees and we had some milestones this year. Mike Anthony, 35 years with the highway department. And Cheryl Hubbard, 20 years as assistant town clerk. And Marie Gardner, while I'm not going to say how long she's been working in the Town Hall, she has been wanting to retire and she is going to retire this year coming up, but she's held off retirement because of our assessment process that was happening. So we just went through a townwide assessment in the last year and a half and she wanted to make sure that it went well and she was very concerned that it was a good process. And in fact, when we look at how many, I'll say complaints or concerns about assessments came up, it was very, very few. So overall, I think it was well done and so we really appreciated that she held off her retirement to do this assessment. So this is a birthday, not a birthday, a 35-year celebration cake. I don't know if you can see it, it has little trucks on it. So this was for Mike Anthony. And I asked him what he did on his first day 35 years ago, working for the town crew. He said, "Picking stones from behind the grader by hand." So I still think they do that once in a while, but you know, of course now on our trucks, they have computer tracking where they track how many miles and how many pounds of sand go on, so it's a little more complicated, I think. We have some new town employees that are worth bringing up. Bart Sherman is a new employee for Utilities and Waterworks. Frank Bryan, a new full-time police officer. Susan Mantagna is our zoning administrator. We mentioned Joy, our new assistant town administrator. And John Titus is a new employee for the highway department. And not only do we recognize the great employees we have in the town, others recognize them too. This is a picture of John Alexander, who works for our water, wastewater, getting an award from the New England Water Environment Association as operator of the year for Vermont. So it's good to know that we're getting those kind of accolades. So some highlights from the last year. We got through the process for the Vermont Gas easement across the Jupreg Park. And while I know it was a difficult process, I think in the end, it turned out to be a fair process. We certainly got increased compensation than where we started and in the end, they ended up drilling underneath the park so they didn't trench across the Jupreg Park. The successful bond vote for the town garage, long overdue. The Bissonette Fields have started and this is, again, a long, long project and we're going to have, it's going to open up this year. And I think there's going to be dedication too, so more information on that. We have a new town plan that was approved in September. That gives us a lot of guidance on where we're going with the town. It's on our website. I encourage people who haven't looked at it to take a close look at it because that's telling us where we're going. And then a lot more. We finished the reappraisal. There was a realignment of the Baldwin Charlotte Road for some safety and improved maintenance of a difficult section of that road. There's some ordinances, including the animal control ordinance was changed. And if I remember, last year there was some conflict about the wording of that and I can say there won't be bites or attacks by law enforcement. It's been reworded appropriately. We added some policies, conflict of interest purchasing policies, and there are more policies to come as we try to standardize some of the organization across the town. Several trail easements, some conserved land, a new farm conserved and completed work around the old police station as that got rebuilt. The little connector road got finished. And the other thing the town did was join Vermont Alert and that's a service that you can sign up. You go to this website and if the water gets turned off or there's a fire emergency, a flood, anything like that, using your cellphone, you can sign up to get texts or an email or whatever. So it's a great way to communicate and we encourage people to sign up and you can sign up to whatever level you want to be signed up for, but it allows us to get the word out when there's important information to communicate. So here's a picture of the Bissonette Fields. If you haven't been out there, just take a walk out there. It really is a beautiful sight. And I'm going to say, if you see in this picture, it looks like there's some tire tracks there. That was not, I did not drive on that field. So just Tom, I didn't do it, Jen, Frank, that wasn't me. So it really is a beautiful. So it really is a beautiful sight. And as I was walking across it, I could just hear kids' voices and adults, you know, the fun that's going to, going to be there. So, and it happened through really many, many donations, some large donations, soda pop bottles, I mean, everything. So very excited and thankful for all the volunteer work that got that done. So a field, at least one field is expected to open this fall, and there will be a dedication. There's also, Tom, I'm doing this for you, a Calcutta at Cedar Knoll on April 14th. That's another fundraiser for the Bissonette Fields. Some of the challenges, development constraints. So we have a few developers that want to go into the village and do some development that's well planned for, but we have constraints primarily. It's been water. And so we're continuing to search for more water sources, and we also have a new draft wastewater permit that the state has given us, and we expect we'll go through, but it's being challenged. And so we'll have to see how that triggers out and what upgrades may be required to meet that. So, so there'll be more on that. There's some stormwater rules, new state rules coming down, and that's going to require us to, the town to take some actions, and that's a challenge. And as some of us know, the drop-off center had to move out while we, or chose to move out while we're doing the construction for the new town garage. We designed that site around them coming back, and our expectation is they will come back, but we're still working with them to do that. Here's a site of the solar farm that you paid for. It's waterfront property, apparently. That's a wastewater lagoon, so it's on the Charlotte Road just to the north. There's, it's 150-kilowatt system, 31 trackers. I think this is a demonstration that this town, these kind of projects are important. It passed two to one for the bond. It should pay for itself, so in 2018, the bond cost is 42,000. The expected solar credits will be 51,000. So, but it's like farming, you're farming the sun, so we'll see if the sun shines and how much it does. And finally, it's a shot that's out of the town report of our fire department, and just to note, 75 years is a big deal. And I'll leave this picture up just for a second, and I think the fire department is a symbol of what this town is. It's a desirable place to live, raise a family, you know, volunteers turn this town from a town with good services to a town with a high quality of life. You know, people can feel safe. We recreate here, we send our kids to great schools, we have a top-notch library, we hike, run, bike in the beautiful landscape. And, you know, it could go on and on. Anybody here can just fill in the blank. So back to the fire department, I'd like to give them a hand for 75 years of service. So on June 30th, we are told there's going to be a parade like this town has never seen before, and we look forward to that. And the celebration will start on the 30th, that Saturday. Will continue through the next few days till the 4th of July, when it will end with fireworks. So we're looking forward to, to celebrating with our fire department. And again, I just, as a thank you to all the dedicated and hard-working people we have in our town. I kind of estimated we have around 125 people who are volunteers. We, they're, people at town, they're working 24/7. You know, whether it's sanding a road, fixing a water leak, responding to an emergency, clearing trails after a windstorm, working on affordable housing, just everything. So we really thank everybody in this town for doing that work. Heinsburg really is a caring and fun community.
So we'll open up to some discussion. I know that Chuck wanted to have a word as well.
Yeah, I'd just like to make a quick announcement. I'm on the Heinsburg Energy Committee, and we are, come forward.
You're our prototype.
I'm on the Heinsburg Energy Committee, and we are starting a series of informational meetings for, exact, to educate us about how we can take our homes to zero energy. That sounds like a, a large leap of faith, but it's actually being done every day by contractors in the state. And part of our committee, we helped with the rewriting of the town plan, and our goal is to get to 90% renewable by 2050, which is part of the state plan, too. So this is an effort to help show homeowners how they can actually shift their homes to renewable energy. And it's four meetings, they start actually this Wednesday, and there'll be another one in March, one in April, and then one in May. You can come for all of them, or you can come for sections of it, we split it up, but it's a process to show you how to get to net zero energy, saving money in the process and actually having a comfortable home at the same time. I hope you can join us. It's going to be hosted by NRG. There are eight other towns that are partnering with us on this, so it should, should be a great series, and I hope you can join us. There's flyers like this just outside in the foyer there, if you want more information, and there's a phone number you can call, too.
Hi, I'm Colleen McKinnon. I'm on the school board, Champlain Plain Valley School District, and I'm sorry, I don't really have a question. I just want to clarify one point that was made in the report. The increase in the school budget is 2.3%. It's not 8%. The tax rate will depend on what the state sends us, but year to year, it's a budget increase of 2.3%. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Chuck, would you mention again where that will be held?
Yes, that's the NRG building.
Okay, so at the NRG building, and it's Wednesday night?
Start at seven.
Thank you. Any other discussion on Article 2? Okay, looks like you're ready for the question. Article 2, to hear the reports of the officers of the town of Heinsburg and take action thereon. Ask all in favor.
Aye.
Any opposed? Well, the ayes have it, and the motion's carried, the report is written. Moving on to Article 3. Shall the town approve a general government budget of $1,731,252, with the estimated sum of $1,389,135 appropriated from property taxes to defray the general government expenses of the town? Have a motion. Okay. And a second, please?
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion or questions on Article 3? Not seeing any raised hands. Article 3, shall the town approve a general government budget of $1,731,252, with the estimated sum of $1,389,135 appropriated from property taxes to defray the general government expenses of the town? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it, and the motion is carried. Article 4. Shall the town approve a Highway Department budget of $1,2241, with the estimated sum of $864,241 appropriated from property taxes to defray the highway expenditures of the town? May I have a motion?
No.
Thank you. And a second?
Second.
Any discussion, please, on Article 4? Not seeing any. Article 4 reads, shall the town approve a Highway Department budget of $1,2241, with the estimated sum of $864,241 appropriated from property taxes to defray the highway expenditures of the town? All in favor, please?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nay.
Thank you. The ayes have it, and the motion is carried. Article 5. Shall the town approve the Heinsburg Community Police Department budget of $558,510, with the estimated sum of $522,010 appropriated from property taxes to defray the police expenditures of the town? May I have a motion?
No.
And a second?
Thank you.
Any discussion on Article 5?
Considering we're having quite an increase in our taxes, I just wanted to ask the police department, I see you want two new vehicles, and I'd like to get a little more information about whether this is something we could put off for a year, given our, our, you know, increase in costs in other places, and whether it is, just tell us a little more about those
Hi, my name is Frank Cosse. I'm the Chief of Police. What we started doing several years ago is we leased two new vehicles every three years. Heinsburg roads are not friendly on vehicles. It's not like the other towns that just have nice pavement and everything. What we found is a six-year cycle on a vehicle is, turns out to be the, the best cost savings. So like I said, the reason we have two new ones is this was the third year of the cycle. And so right now, we have two 2009s, we have, or no, 14s, and then the 17s. So in three years, we would be asking to do the same thing again. Did that answer the question?
What if we put it off for a year?
The downside is, is that off-cycles it, so now we've got vehicles for seven years. The longer we keep vehicles, particularly in this town with the dirt roads and that, the more it increases our costs. The two latest vehicles that we just sold, Dodge Charger and our Tahoe, we collectively $13,000 in trade-ins. The times when we used to keep vehicles for 10 years, we were getting like 1,000, 2,000 for them. So it's actually a better return on, when we trade them in.
Yes.
Sam, that's a good question, and I can tell you, you know, and we, we listened to Frank on replacing the vehicles, and we have a schedule, but that doesn't mean they're automatically, new ones are bought based on that schedule. So we'll question that anytime one of these vehicles comes up for renewable, renewing, and we've done that before, and we'll continue to do that. So that's, you know, it's not, they're not going to get replaced just because it's time. They would get replaced because it makes economic sense, and Frank agrees with that.
Actually, yeah, they made me work for it. So, yeah, they don't just rubber stamp it.
Hold on, I'm sorry. I'm going to ask you to speak into the microphone, please, thank you.
I was going to say, I've never needed a mic, but I heard the word lease, so we're not buying them, we're leasing them, right?
We lease to buy.
Lease to buy.
We make our last payment the third year, they become working.
Okay. Just wanted to clarify.
Carl?
My name's Carl Bolnick. Couple of quick questions. Phil, just clarification, I think you said there was 200,000, but it's 120, correct?
That is correct. That's Dan corrected. Thank you, Carl.
Then on the police question, there's a comment, there's 23,000 of police impact fees that are going into the budget. My question is, it looks like this is the first year there are police impact fees. And second, is this all the impact fees, or are there additional impact fees that could go into saving tax dollars? And then the second question, I think I know the answer. I was pleased to see the officers got a raise to bring them up competitive. I just want to confirm that there isn't any additional full-time equivalent. It's strictly giving existing staff raises, and we're not expanding staff.
Do you want to answer that? Go ahead.
Do you want me to answer the impact fee question?
Sure, you can, yeah.
Okay. So the $23,000 in impact fees, we did use to apply towards the debt service. Impact fees have been used from the police, and that was just the balance that there was at that time. Those will continue to be collected, so that balance will continue to grow for next year. But for this year, we did use that to offset the debt service on the police station.
And we're still within our six full funding. We have not increased our staff.
Bob Theefels. I, I'm curious to know if the police department has picked up any new equipment on grants or from the Department of Homeland Security, and whether or not, if they have, if they have, could you name those, that equipment, and the uses of those, that equipment, if any, and whether or not down the road, the town of Heinsburg is going to be responsible to maintain that equipment, or to, or to purchase parts of it, or whatever. So will there be an expense to the town of Heinsburg of any of this kind of equipment that is coming to the department, if any, through the Department of Homeland Security? And what is the purpose of that equipment, if any?
Now, are you talking about Department of Homeland Security military surplus? Are you talking, what exactly?
That would be like, yes, definitely that, and, and what the intention of the police department might be in the future to try to procure that kind of equipment. And, and then whether or not there's any other type of equipment that might be used to, well, this may sound paranoid, but to spy on the citizens of Heinsburg, or people driving through.
Well, I want to answer no, that we have not procured any equipment, that I have no intention of ever in the future procuring equipment. As far as spying on citizens, I don't have any drones or anything like that. I have, we're quite happy with what we have right now. I don't need anything else.
Any further discussion or questions regarding Article 5? Andrea?
I would say that typically in the budget process, or not in the budget process, but in, when a grant do become available, and Frank makes us aware of them, it's necessary procedure for the chief to come to the Select Board and describe to us what it is that a grant may be available for, and those discussions would be open to the public. We would a grant may be available for, and those discussions would be open to the public, we warned on our select board agenda. So, in the past, there have been opportunities to get some equipment, some computer equipment sometimes, through Homeland Security or other names that these departments have had. So, I welcome people to question that, and that the select board would be, it would be an open process if those grants were going to be applied for.
Rolf, did you have?
Yes, Rolf Kilman, I'm just, I'm not familiar with the term capital transfer, I'm assuming that has to do with the debt service on the police station, is that correct? And just as a furtherance, I'm interested in the difference in the capital transfer, if in fact that assumption's correct on my part, between the police station and the town garage. I mean, as I understand it, the capital budget for the expansion of the police station was something in the range of a million dollars, and as I understand it, for the garage, it was roughly $3 million. And yet, the capital transfer amount, it's all based on my naive assumption, maybe, indicates a discrepancy that's far greater than the capital costs of those two projects, I'm wondering if, I'm not picking on you, Frank, I'm just sort of curious about this.
Do you want me to take that one?
Sure.
So, the capital transfers are things that are in the capital improvement plan, capital transfers are shown, it's anything with five years or less, and in you, if you see in our general fund budget under debt service, those things have a greater than five-year repayment. So, that's why, under debt service, you see the highway garage, the police station, and the solar trackers, and under capital transfers, so our equipment, and our vehicles, and things like that, that are less, five years or less, are in the capital, and you'll see the capital transfer under that department. So, so, nothing to do with buildings, unless they were really, really cheap buildings, but.
Sir?
My name's Leon Lestage, this is a two-part question for the police department. Number one, with the voting happening tomorrow for regional dispatching, which won't be available probably for a couple of three years, should we anticipate a rather large increase in costs over what we're paying our people that are dispatching today? And are you looking into the future where we're looking to increase our hourly coverage, and if so, is that going to be a tremendous increase down the road?
Okay, thank you for asking about regional dispatching, I had an answer already for it. The reason why we're not voting on regional dispatch is currently, we're dispatched to the town of Shelburne, they're voting on it. If Shelburne were to vote, and eventually they do a regional dispatching, we would have to follow. If Shelburne votes that they don't want to do a regional dispatching, and they create one, that gives us a possible option, to which I would hope that could be cost savings. We'll see what happens, but I would anticipate that there's going to be a slight increase of dispatching fees when, if they go to that. The second part, we do a call-out now, so we have uniformed, or we have officers on from 7:00 in the morning till 11:00 p.m. at night, and then we have call-out from them. That program is still working well. We're not getting so many call-outs that we're breaking the bank, or we're getting so many that we need to start anticipating maybe having somebody over, so for right now, we're doing okay with the John call at night.
I think that program's been going for around three or four years, and it's pretty low amount of cost, and yet, we can respond in the middle of the night if needed.
Anybody else on Article five? Here's your ready for the question. Article five reads, shall the town approve the Heinsburg Community Police Department budget of $558,510, with the estimated sum of $522,010 appropriated from property taxes to defray the police expenditures of the town? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes carry Article five. Article six, shall the town approve the Heinsburg Fire Department budget of $317,122, with the estimated sum of $289,122 appropriated from property taxes to defray the fire expenditures of the town? May I have a motion? Thank you. And a second?
Second.
Any discussion, Article six? Carl?
I don't know who should answer this question, but I noticed that the total budget went up just a slight amount, 5,200 roughly, but the increase in the requested taxes is 50,300 roughly, and I couldn't find anything that showed what loss of revenue there was, so I wondered if someone could explain why the budget's only gone up a little, but the tax increase has gone up a lot more.
I think the only thing that offsets for your revenue is the St. George Fire contract, so maybe, was there a difference in amount for that?
Phil?
Carl, can you just say where you saw the, we see the number for the 5,000 increase in the overall budget?
I just subtracted the tax request of last year's article with the tax request of this year's article, and it's 50,286. I did that for all the items, this one, I couldn't find an explanation. So, the total budget in the article from last year compared to this year is the 5,286, but the article also says they're requesting X amount in tax dollars, and last year was 238,836, and this year, it's a larger number, if I didn't make a mistake, it's, where's the fire department? It's 289. So, went from 238 to 289 roughly.
Comparing the two warned items.
Just comparing the two warned items.
Al, can you shed some light on that, please?
Unable to.
Well, pretty much the fire department presents the budget to us, and...
It should be level from last year.
But perhaps there were some capital transfers from last year?
Capital transfer, plus I'm wondering if it doesn't have something to do with the St. George Fire contract?
Right.
Because that's roughly 25,000. So, when we put it in, it was going to be roughly the last year.
So, your pumper truck, didn't that come off in for FY19? The tanker, the tanker is what I'm thinking of, yep.
When we put the request in, it was level from last year, it went up to a hundred.
But it could have been in the capital transfer.
Yeah, because we know the 5,000, because some of the items we're getting is under 5,000 now, that that, you have to transfer it, or the ADs maybe?
Yeah, well, you'd move those out of the capital transfer into a line item.
We ordered a capital item in for ADs, the calculators, you had to move that into our regular budget because it didn't meet the 5,000 threshold.
Right.
Yes.
Correct me if I'm wrong, but in the articles in the warning, that you, it's not that, those are just the estimates to be raised from property taxes, that's just a percentage. So, what they do is they look at the total budget, and then you look at the total revenue, and then you allocate it based on the percentage of the budget, if, isn't that correct? It's not like how much revenue each department is generating, et cetera, et cetera.
So, you should see that on all the warned items this year?
Right.
Then. So, if you look at the warned items, it isn't necessarily an accurate look at how much the budget is increasing, it's how much more money this year in taxes are getting distributed across each of the items. So, you're seeing that tax increase, Carl, there, but it's not necessarily a reflection of that budget in, by itself, I guess.
If you look at the police and the highway, the increase in their budget, for example, the highway is 83,000, and, I'm looking at different pages, I don't have the pages in front of me. Last year's article, what page is last year's warning on? It's near the end of the report?
Forty.
The minute? Okay. So, last year, the highway budget in that warning was 918,810, which is 83,431 higher than this year's warning. The tax request is also 83,431,000 higher, and the police department is 30,199. Budget request and tax request, while the general budget, the total went up 314, but taxes were actually less, 238,000. But the fire department's budget only went up a slight amount, which would be great if everyone else went up such a slight amount, but the tax request is 50,000, and maybe there's some kind of typo, because that's exactly 10 times the amount of the budget a total increase, 5,286 versus 50,286. So, I don't know if there's a typo somewhere, but...
I suspect it must be in here somewhere, because I know when we had requested, made the budget, it was the same as last year, Carl, so.
So, the tax amount being requested probably should be reduced. Maybe that amount doesn't matter, but something's been added up.
Was there a possibility of a grant that was? No. Well, it would have been last year. As of today, compared to last year, we're about 86 calls over last year, saying they didn't, actually, there was a couple things we didn't hit this week, obviously, it's hard to guess the number of calls, but also the raise in minimum wage, which goes into effect, which we had to review, so. It'd be great to give us the extra money, but I don't think we're going to see it, because I think somewhere, it's, you know, like I said, when we put the request in, it was the same as last year, so, I'm not sure where, where came from. I'm worried that something to do with the capital transfers on, that's 97,000 is what the capital transfer for, the payments on the new pumper.
That shows in the budget. Renee, any thought on that?
I believe the only thing, revenue, that offsets the fire department is the St. George Fire contract.
Yeah, so it must be a discrepancy.
Yeah, so if you take the 317,122, and you subtract 28,000 from it, you get the 289,122, which is what would be, need to be raised by taxes. So, if you're looking at Article six, shall the town approve the Heinsburg Fire Department budget of 317,122, that's the total expenditures that you'll find on the expenditure line, and the second number, 289,122, is taking the value of the St. George Fire contract, which is 28,000, and so you subtract that off, because that's the revenue that's offsetting that expense, and so that brings down what needs to be raised by taxes to 289,122.
Thanks. It's actually a typo, I looked at the warning from last year that's on the website, and it was 283. So, you have a typo.
No, this is for, this is for this year's?
Right, if you look at last year's, it was 283.
Oh, last year's.
If you look at what's in here, it's 238. There's a typo.
On last year's warning?
On what's in the annual report for this year. Do you want me to show you?
Oh.
On page 40, so from what was last year's, the minutes from last year.
On the minutes.
Last year.
Oh, okay, okay. But as far as the article, what we're voting on, those are correct.
So, just to reiterate what was just raised, for everybody to hear.
I see.
It appears, Carl, am I correct in understanding that you relied upon the minutes to calculate the difference?
Okay, okay.
And everybody's in agreement that the numbers are correct?
Doesn't impact our voting, yes.
Okay.
Got it.
Thank you for clearing that up for us.
And I would like to invite Carl to help us next year with the budget.
And whoever's a good proofreader.
Okay, what it appears occurred, Carl was relying upon the minutes on page 40 to compare last year's warning against this year's warning to calculate what the difference should be, and it was inverted, 300, excuse me, 283,000 was warned last year, 238,000 was memorialized in the minutes.
But it doesn't impact what you're voting on this year, so that's just, it's an error in the minutes from last year's town meeting, but this year's article is correct.
Go ahead. Any other comments, concerns, questions regarding Article six?
Can...
Andrea?
Well, I'm just, this is a question for the moderators, at some point, should we make an amendment to correct the minutes from last year as reported in here, so that that doesn't get, that on page 40, at some point, we'll make a motion to correct the minutes?
Maybe at the end?
At the end.
We can certainly address that, I think that it would be appropriate at a time other than under the warned article we're on now.
Okay.
So, we can take that up with other business. Anything further? Okay, Article six, shall the town approve the Heinsburg Fire Department budget of 317,122, with the estimated sum of 289,122 appropriated from property taxes to defray the fire expenditures of the town? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion carries. Article seven, shall the town approve the Carpenter Cars Library allocation from the town of Heinsburg of 216,815, with the estimated sum of 216,815 appropriated from property taxes to defray the library allocation from the town? May I have a motion, please? Thank you, and a second?
Second.
Very good. Any discussion on Article seven? Ken, I'll ask you to wait for Tom. Ken, I'll ask you to wait for Tom.
I have a question. How much of an increase is that over last year?
Are you directing your question to the select board, Ken? Thank you.
Well, Sarah, I think, might want to answer that.
I would love to answer that question. Hi, I'm Sarah Armstrong Donigan. I'm the Director of the Carpenter Cars Library. We are not asking the town for any more money from last year, so it's a 0% increase. Our budget is going up 8%, but with responsible saving and some individual donations, we're going to absorb that percentage ourselves. So I also just want to point out that we're going to be open eight more hours a week. So look forward to that. And thank you. And I wanted to sneak a quick shout out to an outgoing trustee who served for 30 years. Darceline Lewis Wedge is an outgoing trustee that has been with us for a very long time. So if we could just give her a round of applause.
Anybody else? Anyone? Okay. Looks like you're ready for the question on 7. Article 7, shall the town approve the Carpenter Cars Library allocation from the town of Heinsburg of 216,815 dollars with the estimated sum of 216,815 dollars appropriated from property taxes to defray the library allocation from the town? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The eyes have it and the motion passes. So unless I hear an objection, I'm going to read Article 8 only one time, assuming we have no amendments. So please be patient. Article 8 reads in the warning, "Shall the town appropriate the sum of 29,100 dollars with the estimated sum of 29,100 dollars appropriated from property taxes to be distributed as specifically designated to the following agencies and organizations? Steps to End Domestic Violence 20350, Heinsberg Community Resource Center 13,000 even, Visiting Nurses Association 6,500 dollars, COTS 1,000 dollars, Howard Center 800 dollars, Chittenden County Community Action 1,000 dollars, Heinsberg Rides 1,800 dollars, Hope Works 200 dollars, Vermont Family Network 800 dollars, Heinsberg Senior Meal Site 650 dollars, Lund Center 1,000 dollars." May I have a motion, please? Thank you, and a second? Any discussion on Article 8? Seeing. Thank you.
Vicki Matthews. I was talking to Carla Munson. This has nothing to do with the budget right now, but in a way. Heinsberg Rides is looking for volunteer drivers. So I told Carla I'd put a word out there for her.
Thank you. Any other comments or discussion regarding Article 8? Please.
Will McKinnon, I just have a question. Do these numbers, where do these numbers come from? Is this what is being requested by these various groups? Or do we have a subcommittee that reviews and allocates?
Yes, there's, there is a committee we have, or I believe there's three. And there's a vacancy. And they take all the requests in at a certain time of the year. I'm not exactly sure when it is. And they review them all, the amounts, which agencies. And they put forward a recommendation to the select board.
I don't know if we have anybody from the committee here, but I know that they look at the number of Heinsberg citizens that are served by each agency. So they have a process where they measure their effectiveness and, and how they impact the town. And then again, make a recommendation to the select board.
And to add on that, they don't level fund either. The request comes in, it's considered, and through that process, the numbers are developed for your approval.
Just a quick follow on. The only reason I ask that is when I look at the numbers and the allocation, I see Howard Center. And with all the challenges we have with the youth, you know, in Chittenden County, it just seemed like a low number. You know, I'm not, I'm not advocating, it's just sort of stuck, it jumped out at me. Thank you.
These, these are requests from those agencies.
Anyone else? Renee's walking up the hill. Okay.
Kathy Newton on the agency request review committee. Hi. That is the amount that they requested for the year. So, and they do serve 130 people here in Heinsburg, so.
Well, noting that there's been no amendment to the article I read earlier, I'll ask if you're ready for the question. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Any opposed? Very good. Article 8 passes. Article 9, shall voters authorize the select board to borrow money when needed to meet current expenses and indebtedness of the town of Heinsburg? A motion, please? Thank you, and a second? Any discussion regarding Article 9? Appears you're ready for the question. Article 9, shall voters authorize the select board to borrow money when needed to meet current expenses and indebtedness of the town of Heinsburg? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The eyes have it. Motion carries. Once again, unless I hear an objection, I'm going to read Article 10 one time through, unless there's an amendment. Shall voters authorize the payment of real and personal property taxes for the final, excuse me, fiscal year ending June 30, 2019 payable in full to the town of Heinsburg in one installment, with the due date being November 15, 2018? Any and all payments received in the town treasurer's office later than midnight on November 15, 2018 will be considered delinquent and will be subject to the collection of interest at the rate of 1% per month or fraction thereof for the first three months and thereafter at the rate of 1.5% per month or a fraction thereof. May I have a motion? Thank you. A second? Any discussion or questions regarding Article 10? Seeing none. Appears you're ready for the question. All in favor regarding Article 10?
Aye.
Thank you. Any opposed? Article 10 passes. Article 11, to transact any other business as property brought before said meeting. Motion, please? Thank you. Any, a second? Any discussion?
I'd like to make a motion to amend the minutes from the March 2017 town meeting. Article 7. To correct, for a correction to, of what's written of 238,836 to be changed to 283,836.
Second. Very good. Any discussion regarding this motion? And all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Any opposed? The motion carries. Any further discussion or new business to raise? Yes, Peter?
I'm, I'm wondering whether there's been any progress towards getting speakers and microphones for audiences during the committee meetings, select board meetings, et cetera. Well, it's wonderful to see so many young people here. There are many of us that simply cannot participate in those meetings effectively because we can't hear what other members of the audience are saying or frequently we can't hear what the select board or the planning commission, whatever, is saying. And this has come up several times. And I don't know whether anything's been done or not, but I think there's a real need that we begin to let everybody participate in these meetings.
Anybody like to address that with the select board?
Sure. Thanks, Peter. So I think we're sensitive to that. The select board meetings were moved from the upstairs of the town hall to the first floor. And we thought the acoustics were better, but perhaps they're not. So we'd be looking for feedback on that because we are sensitive. I know in the large room there, it was hard for everybody to hear and to chase around with a microphone, but I, I think it's been better. But again, we'd be looking for feedback.
I can tell you, Peter, that for me, the upstairs room was a real challenge. I could never hear what Phil was saying, even though he wasn't that far from me. And the downstairs room is much, much better acoustically. So I don't know if you've been to one of our meetings downstairs, but if you do, I'd be, if, when you come, I'd be interested to see if you also find it better.
We're also finding it much better for viewing items as well. So it seems to be working really well.
Anybody else? Greg?
Hi, Greg Leroy. Regarding the expectation for the CSWD facility to return, I'm just wondering if there's anything that we as citizens can do to encourage that organization to commit to that? I know the select board has been working on our behalf, but I'm wondering if there's anything more that we all could do because I'm sure everyone's interested in having that facility return.
Well, our representative to the Solid Waste District is Lynn Gardner. And I think if he, hearing from citizens, constituents here, he certainly knows that the select board has been working hard to let the CSWD board know. I think when you go to one of the alternative drop offs, letting the operators there know that you really miss coming to Heinsburg, I think writing letters, you could write a letter to the CSWD board. And we, we fully expect that they are going to return. I mean, the site plan is, it's ready for them. And we've done all of the stormwater planning for that amount of impervious surface. They're, they've requested electrical outlets to the conduit to go into the places where their, their place will be. So we expect they'll be there. It shouldn't take too long. I think the Highway Garage project is moving along on, on schedule. And as soon as Mike and his crew are able to move their equipment into the town garage, the new town garage, they will take great pleasure in demolishing the old one. And then CSWD can come in. And build theirs. Shouldn't take too long. We expect that the garage will be finished on track, which is in June. Right, Renee? I'm looking.
Yeah, I mean sometime.
June, July.
July, midsummer, perhaps.
And probably within a month, the old garage, Mike, Mike thinks he can do it in a weekend, will be demolished. And, and then we, I would expect probably two months. So August or September. October, we would expect that CSWD would be back. Renee has, I think, better handle on that.
It might be helpful to add that we have done an RFP to try to get temporary trash service here in Heinsburg. We weren't successful in the first round, but I'm still in communication with other haulers. So I just talked to one this evening. So it's still possible that we might have some temporary service coming relatively soon. But that's still up in the air.
Ray, did you have a question? We have just a couple of more points before, but I'll entertain your motion shortly, Ray.
This is for the board. What do you have been placed for a plan for Green Up Day?
I almost put something on my slides about Green Up Day. So Green Up Day is the first Saturday in May and we'll. Oh, well, we're fortunate. We have a pretty good system here in Heinsburg and our town highway crew hauls our trash force. They haul it to Williston. So it'll, I assume, will do the same exact thing. You can bring green up trash. We'll be checking to make sure it is, in fact, green up trash. But you can bring it to the town. We'll probably have the trucks in a different spot because of the construction. I haven't talked to Mike about it yet, but you can expect Green Up is coming. And we pretty much do more than 90% of every road in Heinsburg. We, and I mean, everybody here, so.
Roger, waiting to hear from you.
Roger Cohen, I just wanted to say that considering how short and non-controversial this meeting has been, I wanted to thank the select board for all your work and a very thankless job. And thanks for doing such a good job for the town.
Roger, I've got one more question for you while you're still here. What'd you think?
I, it was great. And I assume you will keep it up. I wasn't even going to raise it. I assume this will continue to be distributed.
Thank you, Roger. Mr. Lifford?
Would it be in order for the, for there to be a motion from the town meeting encouraging CSWD to return to Heinsburg at the earliest convenient time? I think in addition to the select board's efforts, if we as a town meeting were to do that, that might just be one more indication of Heinsburg's great interest in having our own station returned to Heinsburg. And if that, if that's in order, then I would so move.
Sounds like we have a second. Any discussion regarding Bill's proposal to have a motion and have it be reported to CSWD? Sam?
Ultimately, whose decision is it? Is it, can we just say we want one and they come? Or can they just sort of arbitrarily say, no, we don't want to be in Heinsburg anymore?
It, it is their decision in the end. And, you know, they have their own budget and concerns to, they have to serve the, the district. But, you know, they could decide where to put drop off centers or not. We understand Heinsburg, even though it's only open one day a week, is a very successful drop off center. And so we are, you know, pursuing everything we can to get them to come back. And, and they've said to me directly that they want to come back, but they have to sort of crunch the numbers because there is some construction cost to set up a new center in, in the new space we're giving them. So they have to go through their process and do an evaluation, I think. Again, we expect they're going to come back, but they haven't been able to sign on the dotted line or, or make a promise. If, in fact, it doesn't look like their decision is in the other direction, you could rest assured, we're going to get everybody behind us to, to get this district, who is our, is, we're part of it, to get them to help service the best way that they can. So I think this motion is a great idea.
Bill, follow up?
Well, I would make the motion, but I would just suggest that we take the initiative on this end rather than having to try to persuade them after they've made a decision that we don't agree with. Because there is no guarantee that they will do it. That's their decision. And while the select board, I appreciate your strong support for it. I think we should express arcs. What I have a sense is that Heinsburg, I certainly went there plenty of times, and I I would like us to do everything possible to ensure that they return to Heinsburg. So I would move that the town meeting express our strong support to CSWD for returning to Heinsburg to establish a recycling, or whatever the appropriate name is, station as soon as practical.
Well, all in favor of Bill's motion?
Aye.
Sounds resoundingly loud. Any opposed? Well, hearing none, the motion passes. Any further discussion this evening, or shall we entertain Ray's motion to adjourn? Well, can I hear a second? And all in favor?
Aye.
Very good. The eyes have it. Good night. Thanks, John.
And applause, too.